Okay, ladies and gentlemen, welcome back. At this time, I would like to call to order the regular council meeting for Garfield Heights on four twelve twenty twenty one. Barb, would you take a roll call, please?
Dudley?
Yeah.
Donahue?
Here.
Nenadovic?
Nenadovic is here.
Lake?
Here.
Taglerini?
Here.
Von?
Von is here.
Okay, six present, one absent.
Mister Chairman.
Blake?
Like to make a motion to excuse Councilwoman Shayla Davis from tonight's regular meeting of council.
On the motion by Mister, may I have a second on that?
Second it.
Seconded by Mister Dudley on the motion by Mister Blake and seconded by Mister Dudley to excuse Councilwoman Shayla to adjourn proceedings. Uh, Barb, would you take a roll call, starting with Mister Blake?
Sorry, Blake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Von?
Von, yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Nenadovic?
Nenadovic votes yes. Okay, that passes six to zero. Councilwoman Shayla Davis is excused from tonight's proceedings. And let's hope she gets well. From what's ailing her, so, um, okay. Um, uh, starting to move on. Nice reading off. I would like to make a motion to accept the council minutes from Monday, March twenty second, twenty twenty one, as read. Are your motion to accept? Or seconded rather?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mister Blake. Barb, would you take a roll call, please?
Nenadovic?
Nenadovic votes yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Von?
Yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Okay, that passes six zero. Moving along, um, other than the letter that you stated, Barbara, are there any other written communications to counsel tonight?
Uh, no, sir, there's nothing else.
Okay, I thank you very much. Okay, we will go into legislation in committee. Are there any, anything coming out of committee? Nothing? Okay. Um, I will then move on to the report from the mayor and any directors that wish to speak tonight. Mayor, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Uh, first, I'd like to say thank you to, uh, and I, and I know our, our director is on the call, I seen him earlier, but I just want to say thank you to his team over there for putting on a great ice show, uh, an event that was out. I believe the end of March, March twenty seventh, I want to say it was. Um, I will tell you what, the, uh, amount of people that have reached out to me about how well that particular program went off is, uh, is overwhelming. Um, I appreciate everybody's comments, and I just want to say thank you to, um, Paul Burke for, uh, and his crew over there for really putting on a great, great program. Um, I don't know if you've, uh, realize it, but if you're driving down Turney Road, McDonald's is missing. However, they are re, rebuilding their, um, facility, and, uh, it's gonna be a new state-of-the-art McDonald's. I gotta really hand it to, uh, Nancy and John House for, uh, really coming through and making Garfield Heights a, a nice, uh, home for their business. Speaking of business, I just want to remind everybody that there is a, uh, rezoning, uh, issue that is on the ballot in May, and that concerns Sanoco over there on the corner of Rockside and Turney. You know, residents are gonna be asked to vote on the zoning change, they're gonna tear down four houses and really make that, um, gas station a new state-of-the-art facility as well with, um, much-needed better parking. Um, it seems to be that is one of the things that I've heard. Concerns for the resident. There is also another business that we, we coming to, uh, the city of Garfield Heights. We are right now in the process of finalizing our incentives for a company that just bought a building at ninety-six oh one Grainger Road. They are, um, in the process of bringing plans to the planning, uh, board, and unfortunately, because we were termed out and could no longer afford to wait, um, for anybody else to apply. I had to make an executive decision and appoint, I'm asking that, um, Norma Banks be appointed tonight. She has a lot of, uh, of, um, experience with real estate and with commercial real estate. And I think out of line, we're gonna really need that, um, with some of the incentives that are coming in, some of the businesses that want to come in. Um, we do have a bit, one that's very hot about Bridgeview. However, we can't really proceed right now because some of the things that are happening in our city, and I don't want to get into the specifics of that, but, you know, we're holding up progress of what our city's about. We did have a little mishap with our phones the past few weeks. We had a little mishap this morning, but, uh, they're up and running as far as I know right now. And I have had to get into it with, uh, teletronics and fusion about our phone systems and why we were on an old technology. Of course, they're gonna say that, um, we didn't, uh, sign over, however, you know, there, what I, what I find out is that they're, they're telling us you're supposed to switch over, and nobody in our administration at the time knew we were supposed to switch over, so there was some kind of lack of communication. After my conversation with that gentleman at Fusion, there is no misunderstanding as to how our communications will be moving forward. I've already told them that if we continue to have issues, we will make a change. And it will affect our relationship with that company. So he is, uh, on board with that. We had a little bit of an issue today. Our people contacted him, and within a matter of twenty minutes, he had it up and running and fixed. And that's the type of service I like to see from, from those. I'd like to get into tonight's, uh, legislation. Ordinance number thirty-two, two thousand twenty-one gives us an opportunity to sell some equipment that we are not currently using, or we can get a better, um, system for. What this will allow us to do is put this, these products on gov deals to be sold. And then take that money and, um, use it for, uh, other things like this caterpillar that we are withdrawing on ordinance number thirty-three that is not available. Um, ordinance number thirty-four is a change order for the Broadway Water Main, uh, replacement project. You know, this, uh, when this came to me originally, it was well over a five hundred thousand dollar cost to the city of Garfield Heights. We sat down and had some very, very tough conversations with, uh, Cleveland Water, and we were able to get it down as much as we can, but there's still a cost overrun of sixty-three thousand dollars. The cost overrun, the way it was explained to me was, um, you know, the, these jobs had been bid on or allocated over a year ago, and with COVID, some of the costs have gone up since then. I'm asking that the council support this, uh, the reason being is because we really desperately need the Broadway Water Main be replaced because we are coming back with a, uh, uh, repaving project over the top of that. So if we drag our feet on this, they're gonna repave Broadway, and then what's gonna happen? We're gonna have to go back, reopen it, replace the water mains, and it's gonna come at a much higher substantial cost to the city of Garfield Heights. Uh, certainly, some of the things you cannot bank on are, um, cost overruns. It happens, and to my knowledge, in over twelve years, we've not had very many costs over. This, I think I could put this on, on one hand, how many times it's actually happened, so, um, for the most part, we've won when it comes to these type of issues. Certainly, talking them down from five hundred thousand to about two hundred thousand, I think that is something that, uh, is incredible, especially when you consider the entire project is about one point seven million dollars. So, one point seven million dollars, and Garfield Heights is spending about two hundred thousand, I think that's pretty good. Ordinance number thirty-five, two thousand twenty-one is allowing our rec director and, um, to go out, apply for grants for some hockey, um, equipment for the, uh, grow, through the Grow Hockey Program. I think this will be good for the youth, and I won't, uh, take up any thunder from Mister Burke. Um, but I know he is doing a great job, uh, with some of the recreation ideas he's brought to me, so I'll, I'll weep that up to him if he gives a report. Ordinance number thirty-six, two thousand twenty-one is really to purchase additional body worn, worn cameras for our, uh, safety forces. Um, this is something that we do periodically when we can get, allocate the money and get the money through grant funding, we go ahead and buy some more of it, so, um, I, if you have any questions, Barb can get into that a little bit more. And then Resolution fifteen, two thousand twenty-one, I have to speak a little bit on this one. This is in regards to the Community Relations Committee. I, I want to let everybody know first and foremost that I appointed a designate based on the fourteen or fifteen people that applied for this, position, for, for these positions. Um, all six members that I have asked for the appointment for, all six members have one thing in common. They are in it for the city of Garfield Heights. They want to see the city of Garfield Heights grow, they want to see the community come together, work together, do things together. One of the questions that I asked had to do with a lot of, uh, putting on events for, for the city, and, uh, it was very, very interesting to hear everybody's, um, answers to some of these questions. And I will tell you that each and every one of these individuals bring something different to the table. And I look forward to seeing their healthy debate and see what they can do for the city. My designate, which is not on the list here, because when you designate somebody as the mayor, it does not have to be passed through council, is a, a woman by the name of Marina Bach, and I will tell you, special thing about Marina is not only, only does she bring a wealth of knowledge when it comes to running meetings, managing, uh, situations, but in her own personal household, in her own personal life, she lives, um, in a, in, with a Hispanic husband and children. They speak, uh, both, um, Spanish and American or English, and they, uh, basically live in a bilingual household, which I find to be very interesting because I grew up in a bilingual household. And I think if you've never had that, you don't understand truly what diversity, equity, and inclusion is. And I think that she will bring a lot of that to the table. Um, so I, I really look forward to this committee. I think, um, the other reason why I chose to, to add a designate or designate somebody is because there is no guarantee that come November that I will be the mayor. I certainly hope I will be, but if not, this committee is already up and running and working for the city of Garfield Heights, and that's something that we all can be proud. Uh, resolution number sixteen, two thousand twenty-one is asking for the appointment of Norma Banks as a member of Planning Commission. Once again, I'd just like to say Norma brings a lot of, um, experience when it comes to commercial real estate and, uh, real estate as well, residential real estate, but her professionalism is what attracts me to her. And I will tell you, um, I'm very excited that to have somebody like this put on the planning commission because as we speak to ICP and, uh, Craig Realty and the, and the Bridgeview folks, and some of the other businesses that are looking to come in, and they're, they're all trying to find spots in Garfield Heights or around this area. Uh, Valley View is seeing it, we're seeing it, other communities around us are seeing it. This has become the centrally located, localized place to have a business and to actually thrive in this area, so. All I can tell you is I think you're gonna see a major landscape change within the next five years in this area. Things are done, and if things are done right. And with that, you have my report, Mister Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor Burke, I really appreciate that. Do we have any questions for the mayor on his, uh, report tonight? Any quick, Mister Dudley, please, go ahead, you have the floor.
No, it's not a, uh, uh, really a question with the chairman, but, uh, reference when the mayor spoke up on the Water Main Replacement Project on Broadway. What a lot of people don't know, just like, uh, we always put emphasis on even him, a lot of this plumbing, the piping is seriously old. You have piping around on Broadway, I believe, and, uh, Mister Crock will get to it, maybe with six inches and what's ten or twelve inch, it would be a much better floor of water that you have, you would have more water pressure. As we know, some of the plumbing that was coming down by a hundred and forty first, I believe, it was still old, once upon a time, four-inch pipes that was running down there. So it's a good idea, and I think it's great that we're gonna replace the plumbing before, like you said, before we lay the asphalt, so we don't have to come back and dig the street up once we repair it and make it look good. And that's why I was there, I think it was a good decision to get the, um, the Water Main issue taken care of now, and then get the street resurfaced, so it don't have to be two separate jobs, and you're paying much more money later. And when, for a cost overrun, a lot of people have to realize, when you're doing this contract, sometime you're gonna run into it. And when people say somebody had to watch the work being done, when I worked for the state, like sometime you'd be out there doing a project, but sometime you didn't always do the projects on a state route with more to individuals who had the qualifications and for knowing how the state is, is handled and stuff. So, uh, sometime you're gonna have cost overrun, but the most important thing is that we make sure we get our money worth. And if we get our money worth, the prices is gonna fluctuate, nobody can put it on a dime. But, uh, that's something, like I said, I'm glad to see Broadway get done, I'm glad to see better, uh, plumbing and better piping put underneath there. It's long overdue, and for us to have been here for a long time, we know it should have been done years ago, but we know about the money was funny and everything. And so that's a great deal, Mayor, great deal, Mister Chairman, and the rest of us as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Dudley, for your comments. Any other questions for the mayor? Okay. Mister Peters, yes?
Um, I just, um, can, can the mayor kind of further clarify or, I guess, get into more detail about his statement that only bilingual households really know about diversity and, and inclusion?
That's, that's not part, it's not part of the questions right now, sir.
Part of what he said. I'm going to get, I want to get clarification on what he just said.
Mister Peters, I, I can address that. Maybe I spoke out of line, but un, unless you really were, uh, live in, in a situation where you have a bilingual, uh, family, I don't know if you really can truly identify with some of the things that you deal with, with, uh, diversity, equity, and inclusion. And if I remember correctly, sir, um, we had a community conversation about this about a year ago. And we were waiting, we've been waiting for more information. You can sit there and smile all you want, Mister Peters. That is something that I have been waiting for in order to even help put together this Community Relations Committee. I didn't get it, I, I apologize if I come across straightforward with that. But I just think that that's something that's important. When you're dealing with diversity, equity, and inclusion, I grew up in a bilingual household. I know what it's like to have to take my mom somewhere and have to explain to her what people are trying to say all the while while people are making fun of her. So I understand how that can be. It's not something that's very pleasant. And, um, you know, I would, I would say to you that if you have a, any kind of questions on that, you are more than welcome to reach out to me individually on my cell phone or at my office here, and we will have a one-on-one conversation more in depth about it. I'm inviting you to do that as a professional person, and I would hope that you take me up.
I will, I just, I think it's out of line for you to use this opportunity to try to call us out on our, the, the program last summer that had nothing to do with your statement. That only, in a, and inclusion, you use the word only, it's the exact opposite.
Mister Peter.
Inclusion. We can talk later, but it's uncalled for, for you to go there, that's not the subject of this conversation.
And I'm sorry you feel that way, Mister Peters, but I'm just making an observation.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mister Peters. Um, if not, there are no other questions for the mayor.
I have a question.
And who am I talking to?
This is James Fruits.
Is it on the mayor's report?
Uh, yes, on the mayor's report they just gave, yes, correct.
Go ahead.
Um, yes, I, I wanted to, uh, ask a question based on the mayor's report and the mayor's report during caucus about, um, the ordinance for the, um, for the Community, uh, Relations Committee. Um, I, 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 I have uh, no doubt that the individuals that were chosen, um, are great individuals and have great ideas, and I'm excited to hear those at some point as well. Um, so I have a couple of questions about the Public Relations Committee. Um, one question is, will those meetings all be public meetings? And a second question is, I, I would, I would love to hear the questions that were asked to those who were interviewed. Um, because I spoke to someone who was interviewed, and it sounded like there were minimal, um, potentially only one question, um, related to social justice and, um, racism, and a lot of the things that we discussed that this Community Relations Committee was supposed to solve when we were asking, what is our city government going to do about racism? We were given this committee as the only answer, and the comments made during caucus about candidates being neutral makes it sound like only candidates were chosen, like there weren't any candidates chosen that have spoken up and have been passionate about racism and about healing systemic racism and changing systemic racism in our community. And if that's the fact, I'm, I'm very disappointed by that, so I'd love to hear some, I'd love to hear the questions that were asked to those candidates that were interviewed. And I'd like to hear how that, how that, how that committee, if they are aware that the reason this committee was brought back up right now is because of racism and systemic racism and social injustice. And so those are some of my questions pertaining to that, um, uh, part of Mayor, interim Mayor Burke's, um, uh, report tonight.
Mister Fruits? The questions that, the questions that are asked are on the legislation, not in the selection of the committee. If you wish to find out what the selection of the committee was, I would suggest that, uh, I think I dropped off.
Mister Chairman?
Does anybody still hear me?
Mister Chairman?
We can still hear you.
I lost the zoom.
Mister Chairman?
Go ahead, Mister Burke.
Um, I could, just to answer the question, yes, I believe meetings will be public, Mister Fruits. And just so you know, um, some of the questions I asked were questions like, I'll give you an example of a few because I don't want to take up council's time here, but the question I asked was the demographics of the city of Garfield Heights has now become majority African-American by about forty-eight percent, and forty-seven percent Caucasian or white, with the other minorities making a difference. As a committee member, what would you do to help in bringing people together in order to build relations in our community? Got some great answers on that. There are almost twenty-eight thousand residents living in Garfield Heights. Some folks are not as diverse as others and are aware of their lack of diversity, equity, and inclusion. Can you share your ideas on thoughts on how to better educate residents and address the systemic racism we see in our society today? I can go on and on, and if you'd like, I can provide you copy of these questions if you'd like. But I took a lot of time in dealing with a lot of people, they're experts on diversity, equity, and inclusion specifically in coming up with these questions. One of them happens to be the, uh, the dean of, uh, of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion for a major college here in the city, or in our, in our Cleveland area. So, and I trust what they say, and I, and I will tell you, every single person that I spoke to that was even interested in this particular, being on this particular committee. When I say they're neutral, I think they're gonna debate with one another, but they all have one thing in common, they all want to see the same thing. When I say they're neutral, they're not coming in here with a predetermined, um, let's disrupt city, or let's try to disrupt the progress, and I'm not calling anybody out here for that. What I'm looking for is I'm looking for a group of people that want to put the work in to actually make this community better. And I'll tell you, when I spoke to Pastor Ian Cox, Pastor Ralph Falter, Miss Sarah Lyons, Miss Vanessa O'Malley, Mister Bob Stemknock, and Minister Kevin McHenry, they all had great things to say about what they'd like to see about the city of Garfield Heights and where it's going. But when I spoke to Marina Bach, that was a special conversation, and I think that she's gonna be great as a designate. And just so you know, I believe all seven of these individuals will work together. And, um, Miss Bach is gonna run the, uh, the, the scheduling of the meetings, she is my designate. I felt the need to do that so that this committee will be working for the people from day one, and that's all I have to say. I hope I addressed this concern.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, thank you for answering, I appreciate it.
Um, anybody else have any questions for the mayor? Okay, there being none, we will move on to the directors. Do any of the directors have a report?
Mister Chairman, Paul Burke, Recreation Director, has his hand up.
Paul Burke, as indicated by Mister Blake, you have the floor.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, a couple of weeks ago, as the mayor said, we had our fifty-second annual ice show that was livestreamed for the first time, that went very well. Um, we had an inaugural Robert Dobie's Bulldog Award, which will be given out every season to one figure skater and one youth hockey player. Um, this year's recipients were twin brothers Kai and Kellen Fabian, who won the youth hockey, and Laney Kapowski won the figure skating. Uh, Savannah Urban also won the mayor's trophy, was a trophy winner. T-ball ages five to seven and co-ed softball ages seven to fifteen registration is now taking place. Started April first, and we'll go on through May fifth during open hours, which we will keep the office open on Monday and Tuesday evenings till seven during signups for the convenience for everyone this season. All practices and games will be played on city fields this year due to the metro parks not providing or offering permits at this time. Um, our crews are already getting the fields ahead of it, you know, staying ahead of the game, getting them in shape. Today is our last day of ice skating before we close until September. As we wrap this season up and bring it to a close, the work on the, the work on prepping the swimming pool has started. Our tentative opening date for that would be Saturday, June twelfth. As we close the raking, get ready for the pool, ready, I'm sorry, ready, will be open on Mondays through Fridays, close on the weekends. Office hours are subject to change. You can check the city's website, Facebook page for updated times. Pool passes and ID cards will be going on sale beginning June first after Memorial Day. Prior to the pool opening, we'll be offering evening hours from June seventh to eleventh to be decided. Uh, finally, we are currently in the process of hiring lifeguards and seasonal health. If anyone is interested, job applications are available on. If anyone is interested, job applications are available online. That is my report, thank you.
Any questions for Mister Burke? There being none, are there any other directors wishing to speak tonight? Mister Psychon, you have the floor, unmute please. Thank you, Mark.
Mike. Good evening, everybody. A couple of uh. Uh, points of interest here. Uh, we put out new trash signs. Uh, we struggle with the one day lates because of the six holidays. Um, you know, that occurred during the year. So we put out seventeen. Permanently mounted trash signs that save trash for regular day. And then when they're gonna be one day late, we're gonna mark them with red. Um, signs, so it'll catch your eye. I'm gonna try and. Get with Pat, we're gonna add those to the website and try, just try to help with that because uh. We do get plenty of calls on whether the trash is on time or if it is one day late. Um, excuse me, a couple of other points. Um, I had a couple of residents complain, not complain. I, what, a letter that somebody had written about the city cans and they're, he felt that they weren't getting emptied. And uh, so I did have a conversation with um. Uh, with our uh, refuse place, and they told me that they were keeping an eye on that, making it a priority. I spoke with um. Their supervisor, he is also gonna check on it as well as my foreman. Um, I also did have a. A pretty good conversation with a resident about adding some cans. In maybe some um, higher traffic areas. To try and um, help with some of the um. Um. Pollution or people just throwing stuff on the ground. So. We are checking on this uh, prices of some cans, and we're trying to strategically place a few more out there. And trying to help alleviate some of the um. Um, some of the uh, uh, trash, you know, being on the grounds and such. Um. Also, core community is out there uh, four days a week. I was looking at their sheets the other day, and they're averaging about forty bags of trash a day we are picking up in the city. I know a lot feel that maybe it's still not enough, and quite honestly, it's not, but. I want to let um, the residents know that. We are picking up nearly forty bags of trash a day in certain areas, and we do rotate throughout the city for that. Um. A couple of other things on the trash front. I drive around and I notice how people put their trash out. And at times, it's really nice, and at times it's just thrown out there. What we're asking everyone to do is to make sure everything's secure. Tied, bundled, in bags, in your cans, make it easy for the um, garbage people to pick it up. Um. I also noticed that the recyclable cans, I see the stuff sticking out of the recyclable cans. And it's quite interesting, I've seen um, logs, hoses, um. Just a um Barbie doll, just a bunch of miscellaneous stuff. If you go on the uh, website. Especially uh, solid wastes, they will tell you that the only thing they want in the recyclable cans are. Cans, cartons, glass. Paper in boxes. Plastic bottles and jugs. I think at times people overthink it. You know, like woods recyclable, well, it is, but that's not what they want in the recyclable containers. So if you look on the lid as well, they'll tell you right on the lid. What's supposed to be in there. And I do know that they want. No bags in the recycled containers. So in other words, don't. Put all your recyclables in a black plastic bag, tie it up, and then throw it in the recyclable container. Because they don't know whether it's trash or not, and they're not gonna sit there. Open up each individual bag. So we were asking people just to put the recyclables in there. And as far as the regular can goes, that they encourage you to put those all in bags. So when they do dump from the truck. Um, to the hopper. It'd be less chance of having that trash blowing out and causing um, more paper and debris to be on the road. Um, as far as the uh, streets go. We uh, we are out patching. I wanted everyone to, to know that and have them slow down um, around the workers, you know, they all want to go home to their families as well, but. Sometimes people just race around because they don't have time to wait, and then I'm asking them. If they would be, you know, cautious out there, guys, you know, again, they want to go home to their families. We are also in the process of hiring part-time patchers. And part-time grass cutters. Um, checking with my foreman today. We still need two part-time patchers. And four grass cutters. It's about fifteen dollars an hour. Good way for the kids to, um, or I'm sorry, they want them to be about eighteen years old. Good way for the, some young adults to come out. You know, learn, learn a little bit about us and um. Get some sun and, and work off a few calories as well. So if you guys know anybody, I know it's out there. But we're still uh, looking for a few. Um, and that will um, end my report. Thank you.
Any questions for Mister Psychon?
Mister Chairman.
Go ahead. I saw it, Jason, thank you, I'm sorry, I should have let you speak, so.
Um, Jen Lake has a question. For Mark Psychon, I believe.
Jen, the floor recognizes you.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Um, first I have a praise. I've seen the uh, new signs for the uh, additional city trash cans. I appreciate that. I believe that was Renee Bolton's suggestion at one of the prior meetings. And thank you for taking care of that. Um, uh, my kids even noticed them, so thank you. Also, I've noticed the street sweepers being out. Um. Really regularly, so that's been really nice to see, thank you. Um. I do have a question about the uh. And maybe this doesn't fall under this category, but there is a donation bin outs in the turny town. Um, parking lot in front of what used to be, like where the Salvation Army store used to be, and the donations are piling up in front of that. Um, what would your recommendation be um, for taking care of that pile of donations? Is somebody responsible currently for checking that? Or can we call like Goodwill and have them come and get it, or is it safe first, like say my family to, you know, mask up, put on gloves and stuff and take those things down to them? I don't know how that works, so I'm questioning that because I did notice that those are piling up.
Okay, um, those, that's private over there, that's part of the shopping center. I will personally take a look at it tomorrow. I will contact the building department. And have them get a hold of the um, the landowner over there and make sure that gets cleaned up.
Okay, if there's anything that, you know, like I said, that our family can help. You know, with that, let us, let me know.
Okay, I appreciate that. And yes, um, by the way, on the sweepers, yeah, we are keeping those out, and I don't plan on bringing those in. So as long as we can keep those out, keep them running, it helps everybody.
All right, thank you.
Blake, anybody?
Uh, Mister Taglerini had his hand up and then he put it down. Frank, did you?
Yeah. Quick question there. These signs that you put up. Are those being made in-house at our, our facilities, or are they being purchased on the outside?
We work with, uh, we do do a lot of our own signs, but in this particular case, we do work with the local in. In-city um, um, owner that does this printing stuff, so he, he did those for us. But we do still do make a lot of our own signs. Um, um, besides that.
All right, one other thing, I just want to compliment Service Department on, we had that big windstorm a couple of weeks back. And I believe it was uh, Ward Seven. Uh, really got, their, their trash was all, was that day. And uh, the Service Department really did a good job, could up. I just wanted to commend them.
I appreciate that. I also did contact um, Core Community Service and for them to help us out. And that's a little bit of the flexibility that we have with them. I can move them from area to area. You know, knowing with the high winds, and then you have the trash run, you know where the, the big problems will be.
Yeah. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Mister Chairman, Renee Bolton has her hand raised.
Renee, you have the floor.
Good evening, thank you. Um, I just have a quick question for Mark, uh, I'm sorry, Mister Psychon. Um. I, um, conversations on the phone and you get familiar with people and then you get into a, a situation like this.
I understand.
Professional. Um, I just wanted to ask, um, regarding the recycling, is there any way that you can put something in the neighborhood news to remind people not to use bags for their recycling?
Um, we, we have avenues, I could talk with uh, our HR girl on that. But I wanted to talk to Pat Salami as well and see if we can get some more, you know, notification out on the website. And possibly use the board out in front of the uh, um, in front of the uh, the pool there, in front of the library. So we have different avenues that we can approach, and I just think uh, information is key, so we'll be working on that, trying to get out, you know, as many different places as we can.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both, Jason.
Clifford Kelly has his hand raised.
Clifford, you have the floor.
Uh, good evening, uh, everyone, I'm actually, hold on, let me get this camera. I'm actually on the road driving right now, uh, headed out to Cincinnati, but. So I'm trying to uh, listen, but anyway, um. Regarding recycling, do you know? If uh, when we're supposed to have another um, uh, paper recycling? Um. Um, period. I know we did it twice on last year. Oh, was it three times on last year? I, I know one time it was delayed. Uh, do you know when that's coming back up again after this year?
Psychon, go ahead.
Yes, it, it's coming up here in May. I don't have the exact dates with me. Um, Mister Kelly, though, if you reach out to the office, I'll get you the exact dates, and I do believe they're on the website um, as well. If not, I'll make sure they are, but I believe it's coming up here. Our first one's in May, and I believe the next one is in September.
Okay, all right, thank you.
If you contact me, I can get you those exact dates.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mister Blake?
I am not seeing anybody. With their hand raised currently.
Okay, if there are no other directors wishing to speak tonight, we will move on with the proceedings. Uh. We will go into comments by citizens. Barbara, could you read the rules, please?
Uh, comments shall be strictly limited to brief statements, not to exceed five minutes. With comments limited to legislation on the current evening's agenda. No citizen shall speak more than once.
Anybody wishing to speak on tonight's agenda? How are we looking, Jason?
Uh, this is James Fruits, I have a question.
Tonight's legislation?
Uh, correct.
Go ahead.
Uh, this is about legislation in general. I was.
Tonight's legislation. Tonight's legislation, not in general. Specific.
Councilman, this is a very short question. This is, is this specific to what's going to happen tonight? Yes. When ordinances are brought up in tonight's meeting. That, there are never any seconds asked for before the ordinances. I was just wondering. What's the, i- is that? Uh, I, I just wondered the reasoning behind that. There's always a motion for a roll call and then the votes start taking place. And so there's not, not ever a second, and I didn't know what the rea, that's. That's been standard procedure, apparently, looking back through the minutes, and I just wondered. Wh- um, if I was misunderstanding. That there should be a second for everything.
Yes, and that's, that's my fault. I do take the blame for that, so.
Well, no, no, Councilman, that is, it's, it's.
There'll be seconds as of tonight.
Okay, I. So my question then is, are any ordinances that were passed without seconds? Are those? Did those actually pass? Are those actually legal ordinances?
The vote makes them legal.
Mister Chairman. There's no need for a second on the ordinances. They are already sponsored by somebody and the title is red, so you don't have to second them. So Mister Fruits, all the ordinances that have been passed that way, which have been passed for years, are proper.
Thank you, Mister.
Very good, thank you, I appreciate that. I, I just didn't understand the, that the um, sponsor uh, was what made that different. Thank you.
Very welcome. Okay, any other questions on tonight's legislation? Jason?
I do not see any hands raised at the current time.
Okay, if none being raised, um. Are there any committee reports? You have anything, Jason, from the school?
I do not have a report from the school system.
You're doing, I thank you for that. Okay, we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. Okay, um, starting with ordinance thirty-two, twenty-three, twenty-one. Um. Barb, would you read the title, please?
Ordinance number thirty-two, twenty-twenty-one. Sponsored by Mayor Matthew Burke, co-sponsored by Council Persons. Nanadovich, Blake, Taglerini and Dudley. An ordinance authorizing the sale and disposal of municipally-owned property, which has been determined to be no longer needed for municipal purposes. Pursuant to section one-two-nine-point-zero-two of the codified ordinances of the city of Garfield Heights.
Okay, um. On consideration of title. Let me see, sorry, here. Um. Uh, Barb, would you take a vote on the consideration by title?
Nanadovich.
Nanadovich votes, yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Taglerini.
Yes.
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 Thank you. Vaughn?
Vaughn, yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
On the suspension of the three reading rule, starting with myself.
Nanadovich.
Nanadovich votes, yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn, yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
And a suspension of Rule twenty-four, Barb, starting with myself. You're muted, Barb. You're still muted. You were briefly unmuted. There you go.
Okay, hope it stays there. Okay, don't know what happened. Okay, uh, let's see. We ran the waiver of Rule twenty-four, Lee.
That's correct.
Already, uh, Nanadovich?
Nanadovich votes, yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
And on its adoption, starting with myself.
Nanadovich?
Nanadovich votes, yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Order thirty-two, twenty-twenty-one passes with six yes votes. Uh, next, um, I would entertain a motion for one of the council people to, uh, at this time withdraw. Uh. Ordinance thirty-five, thirty-three, twenty-twenty-one.
Chairman?
Mister Vaughn?
At this time, I would like to make a motion that ordinance number thirty-three dash twenty-twenty-one be withdrawn from tonight's agenda.
I'd like to second it.
Mister Taglerini, thank you very much. Starting with Mister Vaughn, Barb, would you take a, a, a roll call?
All right, um, Vaughn?
Vaughn, yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Nanadovich?
Nanadovich votes, yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes. That passes six votes, uh, to withdraw. Okay, moving right along. Uh, ordinance thirty-four, twenty-twenty-one. Barb, would you read the title, please?
Ordinance number thirty-four, twenty-twenty-one. Sponsored by Mayor Matthew A. Burke, co-sponsored by Council Persons, Nanadovich, Lake, Taglerini and Dudley. An emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor or his designate to approve a change order on behalf of the city of Garfield Heights. With David Crox, city engineer, per the O-HM advisors change order attached hereto as Exhibit A in regards to the Broadway water main replacement project.
Thank you, Barbara. Uh, on the consideration by title. Starting with myself, Barb, would you take a roll call?
Nanadovich?
Nanadovich votes, yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn, yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
And a suspension of the three reading rule, starting with myself, Barbara.
Nanadovich?
Nanadovich votes, yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
On votes, yes.
Dudley? Dudley?
Yes.
Danahou?
Yes.
And on, um, uh, waiver of rule twenty-four, uh, starting with myself.
Nanadovich?
Nanadovich votes, yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes, yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Danahou?
Yes.
And on its adoption, starting with myself, Mrs. Moore.
Nanadovich?
Nanadovich votes, yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Danahou?
No.
Mister Danahou, no?
No.
All right.
That's five yays and one no. And that still passes with a five-to-one count. Okay, moving on to ordinance thirty-six, thirty-five, twenty-twenty-one. I did that during caucus, didn't I? Uh, Barb, would you read the title, please?
Ordinance number thirty-five, twenty-twenty-one, sponsored by Mayor Matthew A. Burke, co-sponsored by council persons, Nanadovich, Blake, Taglerini, and Dudley. An emergency ordinance authorizing the mayor or his designee to apply for a grant available through the Rogers Shareer Grow Hockey Program for the purpose of purchasing hockey equipment to be used at the Dan Costel Recreation Center.
Under consideration by title, starting with myself, Barb, take a roll.
Nanadovich?
Nanadovich votes, yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes, yes.
Dudley?
Yes, yes.
Danahou?
Yes.
Uh, suspension of the three reading rule, starting with myself, the motion.
Nanadovich?
Nanadovich votes, yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes, yes.
Dudley?
Yes, yes.
Danahou?
Yes.
And waiver of rule twenty-four, starting with myself, please, motion.
Nanadovich?
Nanadovich votes, yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn? Second yes?
Tom Vaughn votes, yes.
Okay, I didn't hear them. Dudley?
It got cut off, yes.
Danahou?
Yes.
And then on its adoption, starting with myself.
Nanadovich?
Nanadovich votes, yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes, yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Danahou?
Yes.
Ordinance thirty-five, twenty-twenty-one passes with six yes votes. Excuse me, I'm sorry, let me get a drink here. Thank you. Okay, ordinance thirty-six, twenty-twenty-one. Barb, would you read the title, please?
Ordinance number thirty-six, twenty-twenty-one, sponsored by Mayor Matthew A. Burke, co-sponsored by council persons, Nanadovich, Lake, and Taglerini. An emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a contract with Provision Incorporated for the purchase of a body-worn camera system, including all requisite software and maintenance.
Motion to consider by title. Barb, would you take a roll call, starting with me?
Nanadovich?
Nanadovich votes, yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes, yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Danahou?
Yes.
The motion to suspend the three reading rule, starting with myself.
Nanadovich?
Nanadovich votes, yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Danahou?
Yes.
A waiver of rule twenty-four, starting with myself, please.
Nanadovich?
Nanadovich votes, yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Danahou?
Yes.
And on its adoption, starting with myself.
Nanadovich?
Nanadovich votes, yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes, yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Danahou?
Yes.
That passes six votes, yes. Next comes resolution fifteen, twenty-twenty-one. Barb, would you can read the title, please?
Resolution number fifteen, twenty-twenty-one, sponsored by Mayor Matthew A. Burke, co-sponsored by council persons, Nanadovich, Blake, Taglerini, and Dudley. An emergency resolution appointing six members to the Community Relations Committee of the City of Garfield Heights, Ohio, commencing immediately and ending December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-three.
Thank you. Uh, to consider by title move, starting with me.
Nanadovich?
Nanadovich votes, yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes, yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Danahou?
Yes.
Suspension of the three reading rules, starting with myself, please.
Nanadovich?
Nanadovich votes, yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes, yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Danahou?
Yes.
Waiver of rule twenty-four, uh, starting with myself.
Nanadovich?
Nanadovich votes, yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Danahou?
Yes.
Yeah, now it's adoption, starting with myself, Barbara.
Nanadovich?
Nanadovich votes, yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Danahou?
Yes.
Resolution fifteen, twenty-twenty-one passes with six yes votes. And our final resolution, resolution number sixteen, twenty-twenty-one. Barb, would you read the title, please?
Resolution number sixteen, twenty-twenty-one, sponsored by Mayor Matthew W. Burke, co-sponsored by council persons, Nanadovich, Blake, Taglerini, and Dudley. An emergency resolution ratifying an appointment by the mayor of Norma Banks as a member of the Planning Commission of the City of Garfield Heights, Ohio, during the period commencing immediately and ending December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-six.
Consideration by title, starting with myself, move, Barb, take a vote.
Nanadovich?
Nanadovich votes, yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn, yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Danahou?
Yes.
But you know, the three reading rule, starting with myself, Barbara.
Nanadovich?
Nanadovich votes, yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes, yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Danahou?
Yes.
Anyway, waiver of rule twenty-four, starting with myself.
Nanadovich?
Nanadovich votes, yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Danahou?
Yes.
And on its adoption, starting with myself, Barb.
Nanadovich?
Nanadovich votes, yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Danahou?
Yes.
That passes six yes votes. That concludes tonight's ordinances and resolutions for the council meeting. Uh, next, we will move on to comments by citizens. Uh, Barb, would you please read the rules?
Comments shall be restricted to any problem a citizen has, which has previously been submitted to his or her councilperson or to the city hall department directly involved. If submission of a problem to a city hall department or a councilperson is made and there is a lack of service rendered in this regard, the problem may then be presented during comments from citizens at a future meeting. It is the intention of this rule that no request of a first nature is presented on the floor at this time. Comments shall be limited to five minutes. No citizen shall be heard more than once.
Okay, before we go into the citizens' comments, I would like to reiterate what Barb just said, because it becomes rhetoric if we just listen to it every week. This has to have been previously talked about or submitted to a councilperson or director. And it's nothing of the first-time nature can be presented on this. And again, councilperson or director. If the lack of service after you've gone through these is, is, is not adequate, now you can bring it up, as long as you've discussed it. And we're going to have to time this. Tom, if you would, could you keep time tonight, Tom? Tom, thank you. Are there any citizens wishing to make comment?
Mister Chairman, Renee Bolton has her hand raised.
Thank you, Mister Blake. Renee, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I wanted to, um, speak about the Community Relations Committee, which was.
Just speak, excuse me, please.
I'm sorry.
Would you give your name and address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Bolton, five-seven-four-nine, Attorney Road.
Did you speak with your councilman? Or, uh, director?
I would like to speak about what was.
Chairman, please.
Evening.
Frankly, Miss Bolton, did you speak with a council representative or a director?
Uh, no, I'm speaking about something that was discussed this evening on the agenda.
But did you speak to anybody about it prior?
How could I do that when it was just discussed this evening?
Mister Riley, I, I, um, relating to you, can that be, uh, part of the agenda?
Well, I think the problem is that, um, it was on the agenda and there was comments for citizens on the agenda, and it wasn't discussed at that time.
Correct.
So, th- this, this, um, section of the, of the agenda has been traditionally for, as you pointed out, questions about services for the city and other things which have already been brought to somebody's attention and, and nothing's been done, because we all, we don't want somebody to say, you know, there's a bunch of garbage in the yard next door to me, but you never called the, the building department or you never called anybody. You know what I mean?
Yes.
So, you know, i- it's up to the chairman whether he's gonna, gonna let this, you know, go forward, but I, I, if it was on the agenda, there was a place on the agenda for you to speak about that issue.
I agree with that.
It was my mistake for not speaking up during comments from citizens on the agenda.
Miss Bolton, I will, this one time, I will allow it. And I give you the floor right now, but it's limited to five minutes, please. Go ahead. The floor is, the floor is yours, please.
I could have been done by now. I didn't realize that, you know.
Please, go ahead.
Um, I wanted to speak about the Community Relations Committee. Um, and specifically the language that's in the ordinance, um, that was passed this evening. Um, I know that the Community Relations Committee was formed a- as a direct response to, um, the, the council members declaring that racism was, um, a, a crisis activity in Garfield Heights. And the Community Relations Committee was formed specifically to start addressing those issues. But the language in the ordinance, um, reads more like the long version of All Lives Matter. Um, instead of specifically addressing the Black Lives Matter that this committee was formed to start dealing with. Um, I wanted to ask, um, you know, I know that we, we talked about this many, many times, um, this committee and everything. I'm glad that it has finally been formed um, and that they're going to be meeting and all of that. It's great. Um, my question is, is a subcommittee going to be formed, um, which will specifically deal with, um, racism issues in Garfield Heights as it was initially intended to do? Um, and then my other, um, question about the, uh, Community Relations Committee was, um, um, no, it was just that. It was just that one. Yeah.
Mister Bolton, yeah, if I may.
Man, since I prepared this legislation, Miss Bolton, the language in this legislation is taken directly out of the ordinance that was passed and debated by this council. So, we, we took the words, word for word, and placed it in there. So, we don't have any other choice. I can't change the language of the ordinance. That was what was debated and passed by this council. So I don't understand why you are complaining about language in there when it comes directly out of the ordinance.
Well, excuse me, Mister Riley, but first of all, I'm not complaining about anything. I am bringing up a legitimate concern, and my question had nothing to do with changing the wording in the ordinance. My question was specifically, will there be a subcommittee created that will deal directly with the race relations in Garfield Heights? Which is what the Community Relations Committee was, was initially formed to discuss. That's what my question is.
Miss Bolton, if I may, when that committee meets for the first time, any committee they wish to form as a shoot-off of that or a subsidiary of that committee, that would be up to them. We've done our part. The mayor went through extensive interviews, and he had a hard time getting more than three people for months. We finally get a committee. If they wish to have a subcommittee, like any other committee in the city, they can address that issue. It would not be up to council. We gave them the avenue. They gotta walk down the street. That's up to the committee. We don't govern that committee. Council doesn't govern that committee. That's a citizens' committee.
That's, uh, thank you for answering my question. Um, I, I think that it's very rude and it's disrespectful when residents are given the opportunity to ask questions about what's going on in our local government and our questions are being, uh, are being dealt with like we're complaining or causing issues. That's what the whole democratic process is supposed to be about, is residents being able to be involved in local government.
I understand that, Miss Bolton. And we did give you a chance at comments on tonight's agenda.
Thank you.
I graciously gave you the floor a second time. Thank you for your comments. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay, you're very welcome. Thank you. Mister Blake?
Mister Chairman, Melissa has her hand up.
Thomas, yeah, uh, Melissa, rather. Thomas, is it? Well, anyway, you have the floor, Melissa.
Hi, before I get shut down, yes, I've spoken.
You're not gonna get shut down. I really didn't appreciate that. Go ahead, go with your question.
I'm only, I'm only saying that because of the way that everyone just handled Renee's question, but I just wanted to clarify that I have spoken with a few people this week, and so I'm following the rules, is what I'm saying, Mister Nanadovich.
You're not gonna get shut down then.
Okay, great. Thank you. So my first, uh, you know, I just wanted to say I'm really disheartened to hear that the letter was not read during the caucus meeting. Everyone decided not to read the letter from the citizen. I have no idea whose letter that was or what that says, but I feel like council is picking and choosing which letters will be read. And the only time that anyone opposes the letter to be read is when it doesn't fall in line with, with the mainstream agenda is of council. And so, on behalf of whoever wrote that letter, I'm requesting that you guys reconsider that letter. Um, in addition, during the March Legislative Committee meeting, Section Nine of the Charter was reviewed for a potential amendment and the outcome was scheduled, um, you know, to have an additional legislative midi, committee review meeting, which you and I talked about the other day. And again, to my knowledge, to date, no additional meeting has been scheduled. Um, and I'm just still wondering the status of scheduling another committee meeting for that. Um, you know, yet you reported that you met with Ms. Shalero to talk about the chicken ordinance, but my concern is there are certain requests that are being prioritized over others. Review of Section Nine has been put on hold for over a month now and I'm assuming it's gonna continue to be put on hold. So, my question to that is, when will the meeting be scheduled? In addition, as a citizen, I'm concerned there have been numerous unethical behaviors occurring within our city council and previous mayor. For example, Mayor Vikolova, to his own admittance, was not only employed as a mayor, but also the safety director, receiving a salary from the city as mayor and safety director, and which he openly admitted occurred from 2017 to 2020, until which time he stepped down, um, due to a lawsuit that was being filed. And this was a direct violation of the city charter. Also, when citizens brought concerns about a certain councilman's behavior, inappropriate perceived racist Facebook posts, altercation in Giant Eagle parking lot, not one single member of council requested a special meeting to discuss these issues. Each member gave their opinion on the matter and one councilman stated, "I stand by this councilman." It is a stark contrast to how everyone responded to this incident revolving Ms. Davis. It was almost as if everyone had a line scripted and a play in a queue as, as it was premeditated. Not only that, but no one gave any support or affirmation for Shayla. Shayla has been a threat to the status quo of this city council and the mayoral campaign. In addition to these issues, there have been multiple violations of the Ohio Sunshine Laws and Open Meetings Act, where members of this council have repeatedly met without following these laws. Chapter Eight of the Ohio Open Meetings Act requires public bodies to provide openness, notice, and minutes of meetings, but despite this law, members of council have repeatedly met with multiple members of council as well as the mayor without following these laws. It seems as though city council is trying to make an example out of Shayla, but in doing so, you're actually showing that there's a double standard within the city council. There's been a pattern of gross misconduct and unethical practices within the city council and leadership roles for years. And this is the first time the city council has decided to take action on what they felt was a violation. This was done prematurely without knowing all the facts, yet the one difference between the previous violations and the supposed current issues is that the previous violations occurred with middle-aged white men. I reached out to Ms. Sowers in HR to get an update on the diversity and equity and inclusion training and I was informed that the training was rolled out to employees on March 23rd. But based on the behaviors and remarks that I've observed today and even the comments by Mike, by Mr. Burke this evening, my concern is that the online train, training program was not sufficient and ongoing training needs to be implemented. Out of the heart, the mouth speaks and I would challenge each and every councilperson to examine their heart, their conscience, and their behavior, because our community deserves better.
An answer to your first question, Melissa. The letter I said would not be read tonight. It will be read at the meeting that it was intended for. And that is the special meeting that would have been held tomorrow. Apparently, you didn't hear that part of the conversation. The letter will be read, but it's not, this is not the venue for it. This addresses a certain subject and that subject is the special meeting that was supposed to be held tomorrow night. And we could have still held that meeting, but as a courtesy, we want Ms. Davis, our councilwoman Davis, there. She has something to say in this too, just like every other council member. And as far as the chickens with Melissa, I mean with, uh, Mrs. Shalero, anybody's welcome to listen in on that meeting. I invited Mrs. Shalero to a private meeting with myself to discuss it, because she seems very, very knowledgeable on it. She's done research. She's made, made advertisements. She's found out different types of, of bins to go. And if you wish to be invited to those meetings, call me up. I'll let you know when the next one is for the chickens with Mrs. Shalero and you are glad. I will pay for the coffee and the donut. There's no question about that. That's what I did the last time. And then, as far as, uh, Mr. Donahue, the citizens spoke on that. They went out, they tried to get a, a petition signed. They went out, they were supposed to get, uh, 10% of the votes from the last voting. They did that. The Board of Elections rejected it. So, they did not wish to submit it again. And that was the end of it. The citizens dropped it. It was the council that dropped it. And, oh, let's see, where else did you ask me? And as far as council meeting and having secret meetings, when we go out to breakfast, there are many of us there, but we don't talk city business. We do not talk city business. We talk about our wives, our families, and we can meet like that, just as long as we don't violate the sunshine law. If I meet three people in the parking lot and it happens to be, uh, uh, Mr. Burke, uh, Mr. Dudley and, uh, Mr. Donahue, we could talk about whatever we want, as long as we don't discuss city business. And we don't discuss city business. And I'll tell you what, the biggest advocate at that is Mr. Vaughn. He's very quick to say, "Hey, we can't talk city business," and we drop it. Mr. Vaughn watches us. He's very, very much aware of the sunshine law. And we do not talk amongst ourselves. You're allowed, I believe, to discuss with one other councilperson, but you can't do it in the group. Then it has to become a public meeting. So, you made an accusation and it had no ammunition, Alyssa. And I'm, I'm very disappointed you didn't research that like you researched everything else. I mean, it, it really hurts me when you tell me I'm breaking the law and you can't prove it. That would be like talking about you. I don't talk about you. I invited you with open arms anytime you want to come to any meeting we have. If you want to meet us that Wed- Wednesday for breakfast, come on down. We meet at LAPS. You can listen to the conversation. We talk about Jim Feeney and his guns. We talk about mine. It's, it's a whole plethora of information. We just don't, we don't talk politics that was going on in this city. So, uh, I, I, I'm sorry that you felt that way, but, um, I'm, I'm gonna keep quiet now, because I'm getting a little upset at being accused of stuff that we did not do. And I can't talk about Ms. Davis right now, because we have a special meeting and I want Ms. Davis to hear what has to be said. So, I'm gonna leave that at that. But I am very sorry you have those feelings. Mr. Dudley, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I just wanna make this comment, you know? It's not about coming on here and talking about everybody's against somebody for the status quo. I believe that we work with each other, we had good relationships and everything. When I was, when, not just elected, when I'm sworn in, I want you to understand this, Ms. Leonard, okay? When I'm sworn in, I take my left hand, I place it on the Bible. I put my right hand in the air. And I swore to protect the Constitution of the United States, the, um, the ordinance in the City of Garfield Heights and the city charter. That is what I swore to protect. And I said at the end, "So help me God." And I'm not gonna lie to God, I'm gonna protect what I swore to protect. I don't like getting the politics on the floor, Ms. Leonard, and sometime people come on comments about who they favor and determine what they say on the floor. I don't mind people speaking, but some of the things I've been saying, I'm saying is disrespectful to members of council. You have a right to say what you want to say. And I very seldom actually, uh, respond to anything and, and that nature. But in the case of this, Ms. Leonard, we have a job. I do my job. I don't put nobody on council above the other. And members of council have talked to me late at night. I'm always available to people. But we swore to protect the Constitution, the ordinance of Garfield Heights and the city charter. Charter is made by the people. You all determined the charter, not us, Ms. Davis. Uh, I mean, not Ms. Davis, Ms. Leonard. Our job is to enforce and make sure that this charter is in fact followed. And I'll tell you, at the end of the day, some things you say, Ms. Leonard, and I have never said it in my 13 years. I think it's just showing a favoritism, Ms. Leonard, with all due respect to you, on who you like and support, because I'm gonna tell you, nobody is worried about anybody. I'm not thinking about anybody. My mind, when I come here at nighttime, is on the agenda. I do not politic on the floor. And really, some of the comments appear a policy. We're not worried about nobody's status quo. I don't think no member right here even had that on their mind. Our first foremost is for the people of the City of Garfield Heights. Our job and loyalty is to them. If I do something, I don't mind. My, uh, colleagues call me, wanna correct me on it, I don't have no issue with that. But that's who we are. So, to say that, "Hey, we trying to punish or hurt somebody because of the status quo," I bag the difference, because you included me in there too. And another thing, Ms. Leonard, I have never, at any event, unless it was a Christmas event or something like that, that I will sit and talk with more than two members of council. But if he say, if I walk in a room and three of them are sitting there, I'm not gonna run to the other side of the room. I would not discuss business. I would not get on the phone and discuss any type of business with members of council, unless it's me in a one-on-one conversation. So, you know, it's, you need to kind of watch, you know? You put us out there and you wanna make us look like the bad guy. We got a job to do and we are doing our job. And I have never broken rules. I've been here going on 14 years. And you very seldom hear me complain about anything, Ms. Leonard. But to use the status quo or accuse us of single and an individual member of council, I bag the difference on that, Ms. Leonard. So, you know, sometime you gotta take a step back yourself before you make your comments. And I'm gonna tell you, I, I, you know, I thought you would have done great on the Community Relations Board. I have talked to the previous mayor and I, and I had honestly thought you would. I, I must go out of the fire. I recommended you to the previous mayor, believe it or not. But you know, the stuff you're doing right now, just sending a different note. So, I want you to know that I did recommend you to the previous mayor, but the process wasn't completed while Mr. Global was here. But don't come out there and throw everybody in the same boat. You don't have a clue. You never sat in this seat. But if you ever sit in this seat, Ms. Leonard, remember, your duty is to the community first. You do not work for the council. You do not work for the directors. You do not work for the mayors. So, you get that some thought, you know, and stuff. Don't put everybody in the same boat. To me, that is like categorizing people and that's something I don't do. You're not saying individual members of council, you're throwing us all under there with deception or want. So, you gotta dig yourself for a minute. You gotta take a step back and look at Ms. Leonard, because you can't come at me like that, Ms. Leonard. And I'm asking you not to do that. And I don't wanna respond to you on anything else. But at the end of the day, it's about God, family, community, in that order. And I take care of it like that, Ms. Leonard. But don't come out here with no comments and disrespecting me or throw me in a group. That's a problem with racism. They throw everybody in the same group and they discriminate against everybody in the same group. So, don't do us like that. You know, you got something to say, say it, but don't tell you what you think that we doing, unless you know what we doing. And I can guarantee you, I done battled for members of council. I would absolutely never let anything like that occur. But I will enforce the ordinance. I will enforce the charter. So, that's what I got to say, Ms. Leonard. And I don't wanna take out the clock if there been more than 10, 15 minutes on the same subject, Mr. Chairman.
Do, do I get a chance to respond at all? Because I didn't go past my five minutes.
Melissa, I'll tell you what. I'll give you, I'll give you a couple more minutes. Go ahead. You have time left.
How much time, how much time are we giving?
He has about two more minutes to go. Yeah.
I just have a quick, I just have a quick, uh, rebuttal. It's not that long, really. Uh, I, I didn't realize that everyone was gonna take that so personally and offensively. And so, if I've offended you, I true, I in heartedly apologize for that. Didn't realize I was offending anyone. I was really just calling out the facts as I know them, such as a review for Section Nine still hasn't been held. There was previous issues with a city council member, including the mayor. So, um, some of those issues, Mike Dudley, I don't know why you took that so personally. My concern, my concern was not you. My concern is that there have been issues going on in the city council, which are verified and true and that it wasn't handled in the same way that it's being handled now. So, I don't know the agenda that anyone has. The only thing that I'm seeing is things are not handled the same way and there's a double standard. And I'm not here to, uh, toot my own horn or select anyone specifically. I'm still undecided in the mayoral campaign who I'm voting for. Okay, it's not about that. It's, it's about what is going on with the city and are we holding each other accountable on the city council? And I'm a citizen. I don't have, uh, any power other than my voice, but you guys have the power to vote and to make changes. And what I'm saying is that everyone should be treated fairly. So, I didn't wanna call anyone out, but since, you know, you brought up, you know, Donahue, like, that wasn't handled the same way this, this situation is being handled and that's my only concern, is just that everything is fair and equitable and transparent for our community's sake, because we all deserve it to be fair. So, I apologize again. Take it or leave it. I mean, you have to decide whether or not you forgive me and if you're gonna take it personally, but I just expect that things would be better in our city and sorry if you disagree and if you took it personally.
Apology accepted and I forgive you.
One minute, Mr. Chairman.
Right, Mr. Dudley.
I wanted to tell her, I didn't take anything she said personally, but when she got to the part on the accusation that we lining up against a member, one of our colleagues, Ms. Leonard, the rest of the stuff is, 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 is behind me. And I have no problem. I'd say what I had to say for all the other comments you made as they occurred in real life term. So, I wasn't referring to that. I was referring to one thing when you made the accusation that we were stacking up against a member of council 'cause we concerned about this person in the mayor race. I don't do politics on the floor. That's the only thing I had a problem with, Ms. Leonard. Your rest of your stuff, hey, I don't mind you just speak up. If you know me and you know my history, I will speak up on the floor. I'm the only person in that conversation and my colleagues made it. But I did take it personally when you made the accusation, when you said, basically, we are stacking a deck against somebody. That was troubling and that was concerning. And I wanted the people to know my per view. And like I said once before, I have no issue with you. If I'd had an issue, I would never recommended you for the, uh, the, uh, Community Relations Board. I did recommend you for that. You know, so, but get that part settled. It's just that, that last accusation, we are not stacking a deck against anybody. I done had a good relationship with every member, I see every member of council. I don't think in none of them I did never have a good relationship. We had a disagreement. One thing everybody know, when I walk in a parking lot, Ms. Leonard, same thing with you. I tell you, take care and have a good evening. But that's all I want to say. It was nothing you said. It was just that one instant where you accused us of stacking the deck and we don't do that.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dudley. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Blake, go ahead.
James Fruits.
Mr. Fruits, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you very much.
Name and address, please.
James, yes. James Fruits, 13600 York Boulevard. I'd like to make this very simple for you guys. City council doesn't, refused to police itself. Mr. Netavich, you said the people dropped the ball and that is inaccurate, my friend.
When did I say dropped the ball? When did I say dropped the ball? I'll check the notes on that.
Yes, you said that the citizens dropped the issue with Councilman Donahue.
Yes, I did say that, yes, I did.
The only, uh, excuse me, I'm speaking in my five minutes, please. The only reason we took up that, the only reason we took up that issue is because council failed. They said, "This is not for us to decide. We're not to remove a council member. If the citizens want to recall him, they can do so." Mr. Netavich, you led the charge on that. And so, I want to know, why is it different now? What is different now that two members now, the same two members that said that the people want him out, that they, then they should get the petitions and have him recalled? Now, you're calling for a meeting, which we all know you're going to ask for removal of Councilwoman Davis. No one is trying to make you all look bad. We are doing our job as residents to hold our leaders accountable and there is so much politicking going on in our council meetings every month and every time there is a meeting. Mayor, Mayor Burke said, I thank you, uh, in one of the recent meetings, said, "I thank you for the, for the criticism and if people don't wanna vote for me, they don't wanna vote for me and I guess I'll be looking for a new job." We're talking about votes on city council floor. You are politicking. And Councilman Dudley, did you or did you not read a letter at the last meeting from Mrs. Brown, who serves on your campaign? Is that not politicking? It just seems so to me. And so, I'm gonna make this real easy for you guys, though. I am reading a post from Chuck Donahue from the Nextdoor app. That's gonna make it real easy for you guys. If you don't call a meeting at the end of me reading this for a special investigation into whether or not Councilman Donahue needs to stay on council, then we all know what's happening. Here's what he said. Hit and run this morning around 7:15 a.m., the corner of Claremont Avenue, 126th Street in McCracken. My daughter's car was struck by some impatient piece of crap. Councilman Donahue's words, not mine. She waited to turn her turn at the stop sign as she crossed McCracken. A light brown or beige color car drove into the rear driver's door, backed up, drove down Claremont Avenue, through the stop sign at Southern Avenue and kept going. I'm not posting this for help if anyone saw what happened because most people don't want to get involved. I'm post, listen carefully. I'm posting this so that the lowlife who hit my daughter this morning knows that he doesn't have to worry about the police finding him. He has to worry that I don't find them. Twenty years in the military taught me a lot. That's the second time now. He said enough said to end his post. So now these are my words. That's the second time now, or third, I'm not sure which, that Councilman Donahue has threatened other people. And he's calling them lowlifes. He's calling them pieces of crap. How, as council members, do you want him sitting among you, representing you? So I believe I've made it very easy for you tonight. And you will call a meeting to discuss Councilman Donahue's behavior. Because the only difference I see in what, in, in, there are much more, I think they're back. I see much, much, many egregious things that Councilman Donahue has done. And you're refusing to address it? That night when we addressed it on the council meeting, many of you barely even said he shouldn't have said it. Many of you didn't even say he shouldn't have said those things. The difference right now, and what is going on right now, is that we're in election season. And that Councilman Donahue is not a black woman. That's the difference. That's why Councilman Davis, this meeting was called all of a sudden when this letter was read on the council floor about this. And so I would like to say also that the sunshine law, I think you should probably check with the law director because even the appearance that council members are meeting together, even the appearance that they may be discussing city business in a group together, I believe is prohibited by the sunshine.
Your thumbs up, Mr. Fruits. And before Mr. Donahue chimes in, if you could tell me what section of the ordinances or charter that Mr. Donahue violated, we would act on that. But again, I don't believe he violated anything. And in reference to, in reference to your sunshine law, are you telling me that three or four councilmen and their wives cannot go out to dinner? Cannot go out to dance, cannot go out to a fundraiser together? Are you telling us we can't do that?
I'm saying I believe that's how the sunshine law reads.
As long as you do not discuss, as long as you do not discuss city business. You can't discuss city business. And we don't.
I'm suggesting that you check with your law director about that.
You're right on the phone. He's here right here.
Okay. Mr. Riley?
I will look into that and get back to you. I don't believe the fact that council people are together in and of itself is a violation of the sunshine law. I do know for a fact that if they discuss city business, it is. So I don't know if the appearance, I would have to check into that. I don't believe so, but I'm not gonna say for sure till I actually look at it.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. There's your answer, Mr. Fruits. And again, like Mr., like I said about Mr. Donahue, if he violated the charter or he violated the ordinance, what you're talking about are legal matters. Those are police matters. And I'll tell you, Mr. Fruits too. If somebody ran into you, one of your wife, your wife or your daughter or one of your children, I'm sure you would use the same kind of language than Mr. Donahue.
No, sir, I would not threaten anybody. I would never threaten someone on a public forum. I did not threaten you, Councilman. How did I threaten you?
Okay.
No, how, how did I, now accusations were made to me. How was I threatened? Yes, you may. How did I threaten someone?
Time.
Mr. Fruits, your time is up. But Chuck, if you would like to respond, I have to give you the opportunity.
I, I deserve an answer of how I, how I, how I came at, I don't even.
Shut up and I'll give you an answer. Calm down, please, please. Quietly, Chuck, thank you.
I'm gonna give you your answer. You threatened me by telling council, they need to throw me off council. That's how you threatened me. My daughter was hit, my, listen, my daughter was hit. The guy backed up and pulled off. To me, yeah, he's a piece of crap. I didn't use any dirty, dirty language. I said he was a piece of crap. Yeah. And you would say the same thing if somebody hit you. Don't know, I don't know. No response, no response.
You threatened to come after him because you have military training. That's different.
That he didn't want me to get a hold of him because of my military training. That's right.
That's, that's threatening language, Councilman.
Mr. Fruits, I gotta take charge of the meeting again. Chuck, um, I, I, I respect your opinion. I really do. And I probably would react to the same way. Mr. Fruits, your time is up right now. Um, I would like to ask Mr. Blake if there are any other citizens that have comments tonight.
Uh, Mr. Kevin McHenry has his hand up.
Mr. McHenry, how you doing? The floor is yours. Unmute, Mr. McHenry. You're muted. There you go.
Hey, maybe, maybe this is not my time because I don't know my subject has to deal with the council. I, but it is something that was out a month ago. I just wanted to remind everybody about the, uh, second shot. Is this the wrong time for that?
You can remind of this part. It was brought up on council floor before.
Okay, uh, because this Saturday, we want everybody that received their first shot at the Garfield High Civic Center. It's imperative that you come back out to receive your second shot, or else the first shot is no good. So we want everybody that came out the first time to come out. Uh, please come within fifteen minutes of your previously assigned scheduled time. Let me say that again. Come within fifteen minutes of your previously assigned scheduled time. This would eliminate you from waiting a long period of time or seeing others come out and go before you. So if you come out at your time within fifteen minutes, we can get you in and get out a little quicker. That way, your whole Saturday is not inconvenienced by waiting period. Uh, but this second shot is critical to the first shot, or you have to start the process all over. So please don't, do not forget to come back out this Saturday and receive your second shot to complete your COVID nineteen vaccination. Thank you all just for that brief moment of time.
Mr. McHenry, I have a question for you before you unmute again. Will you be doing another round of vaccinations?
On the twenty-fourth, but, but the location would probably not be Garfield, but we are doing another round. Is that the, uh, at the church where we are located? I don't even, what's that address? Thirty-three zero four East one hundred and twenty-six. We're gonna do it on the twenty-fourth of this month.
Okay.
Now, this, this is for the eighteen years and up. So you know, children or the young adults who's eighteen, I believe, uh, they're welcome to come and get vaccinated as well.
I thank you for your work, you and your wife.
Mr. Chairman. Um, I just want to thank Pastor McHenry for bringing that up. I, I did write it down on my notes and I failed to mention it. Um, we do have, um, some of our auxiliary officers will be on hand to, to volunteer. They said they would this time. And so I will be out of town this weekend. I won't be there, but I know you're in good hands, Pastor McHenry. And I, I thank you again for, uh, for really coming to the table with that vaccine and helping the citizens of, uh, Garfield type.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Mr. Blake? Mrs. Mala King has her hand raised.
Mrs. King, your name and address, please?
Mala King, nine six one five McCracken Boulevard. Thank you. Um, a couple of things I do want to, I'm not sure it was addressed, but what is the next steps, um, in revising, reviewing and revising, um, the charter? Um, I know that Mrs. Leonard brought up, um, you know, in particular, the review of section nine, but I'm not sure we got a thorough answer on what the next steps will be. I also want to.
Mrs. King, if I may, right now, I'll give you more time because I'm answering you. Oh, the charter review board meets every four years. The last time we met was in twenty eighteen. Next year, we form a charter review board to look over the charter again. Uh, if anything that we would change right now, it would not take place with this council because the elections in November and it would take place at the beginning of the year. So it's, it would be futile to even have a charter review now. But next year, the charter review board will meet. And citizens will be selected, uh, for that charter review board by the council members. And I believe the mayor chooses one and the council president, a mayor chooses two, and the council all choose one.
So.
But that's just for that. That's just for the charter review. You may go on with your other questions, please.
Um, well, one is a statement. Um, it was in the last exchange, or actually, um, President Nanavich, he asked what section that, um, Mr. Donahue, uh, councilperson Donna, Councilman Donahue, um, was violating. It would be sex, section nine where it talks about, um, the professionalism and standards that are to be upheld by councilpersons once they take the oath. So I believe that the, that misconduct would fall under section nine. Also, last summer, um, when we were talking about, um, the social unrest and the racial tension that was in our, our city, we were told, um, that the, this would be addressed by the community, um.
Advisory Committee.
The, the, yes, thank you. So I want to make sure because it's not part of, um, and I understand from, uh, Mr. Riley that it was taken, the resolution was taken directly from the codified ordinance, but I want to make sure that it is on record somewhere somehow that that was promised to us as a city as a way of, um, helping, helping our city heal and bridging those gaps that we have, um, in terms of racial equity in our city.
Mayor, do you have anything to say? I have nothing to say. I mean, uh, the committee was formed by the mayor. He does have the committee together and we are working. The hardest part, Mr. King, if I be, so before I cut the mayor, but the mayor's speaker. We were trying to get people to volunteer and it was the hardest thing. We had a lot of volunteers. But soon we said it was a volunteer job. Half of them walked away. So I mean, well, no. The, 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 the part, the partnership has to be there with people that, like he, the mayor says, that really are looking forward to community. Mayor, I relinquish the floor to you.
Uh, let me just say this, you know, and I think, you know, a lot of people need to calm down a little bit because this has been a very tough meeting, but I took this community relations committee very, very serious. Um, to the, to the point where I said, hey, you know what? If, if I'm not here in November, and I don't mean to politic, but you know, that, this is one of the things I felt was we had to have this committee up and running and on its own. And that's the only fair thing to do. Now, I would just please ask, we've got seven professional people here, seven professional people. Let them do their job. Like, give them a chance. I think right now, we're already trying to put them on trial. You know, the language that's in chapter one thirty-six is pretty explicit. That's what that committee will work on. But I think we need to give them a chance to do their job. When they call a meeting, that's when you'll be able to come in and ask those questions. I, I really think right now, you know, we need to really do that. You know, I just think that's the professional thing to do. I think that's the right thing to do. And we've had a lot of emotions flying around tonight. Um, I, I don't really understand why, because this is supposed to be a meeting of council to address legislation that was already in the works. Any, any type of debate is usually done in a committee setting. Um, but hey, if the residents want to debate on council floor, that's up to you, Mr. President. I mean, that is, it's your meeting. But I just think that, you know, uh, it's, I'm just asking people to, to please just let this committee do its job. That's all I'm asking. I hope nobody has a problem.
Well, I, I, I.
Go ahead, Mrs. King, you got the floor.
I know that the committee, it took a while to get the committee up and going. That is, is definitely not my issue. You guys have kept us um, in the loop and up to date with that. I'm just going back to where we were last summer and we were trying, you know, we as a community, we're asking our community leaders to address the issue. The way that our community leaders indicated they were going to address the issue was through this committee. If there were gonna be, if it wasn't gonna be through the committee, um, or that's not the intent, then we should have continued to work as leaders of the community and community to figure out how we were gonna move forward. So I just want to make sure that this is on their agenda. I know it may not be the first thing that they, uh, address because they have to, you know, build a relationship among themselves before they can even do work. But I just want to make sure that it is on their agenda, you know, as this new team. And I don't even, I'm not sure. I saw the list of individuals that were chosen and I'm not sure if they were a part of some of those conversations last summer. So just making sure that they, um, know what they are, um, expected to do, including, um, one, one thirty-six, codified ordinance, one thirty-six.
If I may, Mrs. King, this, um, this committee, we tried to get this started in January. We didn't have any responders. And the, uh, movement of the mayor to relinquish his job and give it to Matt Burke, President of Council. Um, he says, well, I'm gonna let Matt work with that because he's gonna have more time with them. Then we couldn't get anybody and we finally got enough people and Matt did make an appointment. And I think he's done a great job, a lot of efforts. But I will encourage one thing. I hope that when these committees start, start having meetings and they are going to probably be Zoom. And they'll probably have their own website. I don't know if they're gonna use the cities or what. I'm not up on that yet. And only the mayor and Bruce Hobson would know that. I wish that the, um, participation would be the fifty-six or seventy-two people that we sometimes have at these meetings to bring these ideas forth. And to say, hey, this is what the committee was supposed to do and actually help them help you. Don't let them make all the decisions, just like, you know, you tell us what to do sometimes and we move on some of the stuff. Some of the stuff we can't because we're bound by law. But, uh, I, I hope the community participation, Miss King, is as great as it is right now. I really do.
I, I hope so as well.
Our mouth to God's ears. Mr. Blake, I relinquish to you.
Chairman, Ms. Barb Graves has her hand up.
Ms. Graves, uh, name and address, please. The floor is yours.
I'm sorry, one thirty-six sixteen Bangor Avenue. I have not, I don't know who is on the, who is on the, uh, committee. Can you tell me who's on the committee? The six members.
Yes, I can. Let me get my paperwork back over here. Okay, the people that are on the committee. Excuse me, one second, please. It's very dry tonight. Gatorade. Oh, Pastor Eon Cox, Pastor Ralph Faulkner, Sarah Lyons.
I'm sorry, I have second name. Just spell a second name for me, please.
Pastor, Pastor Ralph Faulkner, F.A.U.L.K.N.E.R.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, and Sarah Lyons, that's with a Y, not an I.
Got it.
And then the next one is Vanessa O'Malley.
Got that.
Bob Stemnok, that's S.T.E.M.N.O.C.K. And the last one is Minister Kevin, that's K.E.V.Y.M. And the last name is McHenry. That's the gentleman that has the vaccines that we were receiving at City Hall last week.
Right, got it. Thank you so much.
And Mrs. Graves, um, we also have as my designee.
I got that.
Marina Bach, B.A.C.H.
I've got that. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jason?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Lanine Jones.
Ms. Jones, your name and address. You have the floor.
Um, Lanine Jones. Oh, I'm sorry about this background. I don't know. Anyway, one thirty-two zero four East Whipple. Um, I just wanted to make a comment. And I want to, uh, follow up with Mr. Dudley on the email that we had on, on March seventh. So my first comment is, um, I know that the councilwoman Shayla Davis put up a post that she was sick. She had COVID. Her, her daughter and her, um, her grandson. So I wanted to send our well wishes to, to them, to her family. And hopefully, um, she'll be ready by next week. But if not, I hope you guys give her enough time because those who have suffered from COVID, you know, they're, they're. because those who have suffered from COVID, you know, there, there are some lingering effects to that sometimes too. So I want her to be well enough to, you know, be present for that situation. But I wanted to follow up, um, with Councilman Dudley. He said that, um, he, when we were talking about, uh, section nine of the charter, he said that, um, it was a dinosaur law in our, um, in our emails, that was March seventh, and that he was presenting legislation to have it changed so that we can vote on the November ballot. Um, and I talked to other members of council and you guys also agreed it was a dinosaur law. So I want to know what has changed, um, now that you guys are not willing to put legislation through to change it since it's a dinosaur law. Uh, where are you at with that? Are we not putting it through now or are we waiting to for the, the charter review board?
Mr. Dudley, go ahead. You have the floor.
Unmute, Mike. All right. I'd say it, like I said, is a dinosaur law. And let me just share my background for a minute there, Ms. Leanna Jones, so people know. In two thousand and seven, when I got elected to office, prior to coming to this office, I was in fact a state worker. I was a highway tech worker working for ODOT. And I was made aware of this before I got elected. You can look in the Maple, uh, the Garfield Maple sign. Take a look at it. I would make him thirty-one thousand plus, would did not include the money I made from my winter plow when we went on twelve-hour shifts. It was made perfectly clear to me then, and I, and I, hey, I made a tough decision. Walk away from that job if I was going to be on Garfield Heights City Council. I made the tough decision. It was a financial hurt, but I made that decision. So throughout the years, I have had friends in the, uh, who were lawyers and everything like that and they double checked. And they went through all the scenarios.
Accurization.
And we couldn't find nothing that will allow me to return back to that. As we move forward to it, as, and I would like to see it change, I really would. But the fact is, like I said, we are in an election year, first of all. Twenty twenty-two will be your year that you will make that change. I may not be with this council, most likely going to be a new council either way. But that is so that it would change. But the law still applies now. You guys keep on losing my voice a little. I've been doing some work out here today. But the law still is in the same way. As of now, it is section nine and it stays section nine. When it's put between the people, like I said, the people would like to have it moved and change it. They can do like they done with the, um, rubbish. They can go out and they can gather the signatures and they can get it on a ballot. But you're still looking at the fact that there's an election there, Ms. Jones. I think it should change. After when it should be changed, I believe that should be up to the people. But I do believe twenty twenty-two is the year that you should submit it before the Charter Review Board. It's not going to do anybody different. It's not going to allow me to, if we put it up, it would not allow me to go back to public employment. I'm a heavy equipment operator for the state. I'm not going to be able to go back there. It makes no difference to me. But right now, I think the law is outdated. But once again, the charter belongs to the people. It do not belong to Mike Dudley. Do I think it's an outdated law? An outdated part of the charter? Yes, I do. And I think it should be done. I did care to the charter review. I cared to the charter review, I think it was in two thousand and eight. They took a look at it, they discussed it, it didn't go through. But I made that attempt before, but I followed the procedure, Ms. Jones. The procedure was to present it to the Charter Review Board. So I took it to the Charter Review Board. They reviewed it, it didn't come out the charter, they didn't agree with me at the time. And you know what? I respected their decision at the time. I brought it back again because this time I think that we have a good chance of getting it through the Charter Review Board. But the board don't meet until twenty twenty-two. And once again, I don't think is a, a good law, but it's the law that the people chose. We are a charter city, Ms. Jones, at the end of the day. If we could take it and ask councils, hey, we're going to pass an ordinance and everybody can work public employment, you can't do that. We are a charter city.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Ms. Jones, you still have some time left.
Okay, thank you. So in March, we were talking about you were going to actually submit some legislation so that it can be put on the ballot so we can vote on it in November because that was an option. So are we not doing that now?
No.
Cause if we could vote on it in November, it would go into effect the following year.
There's a piece of legislation that have to be, that has been shared with the Legislative Committee. And that's for merely Legislative Committee is merely for discussion of this. And to give them an opportunity to look at it. This legislation will put together back in twenty twelve, I believe. I think it's twenty twenty twelve or something like that. And that will go to the Legislative Committee, where we will have an opportunity to actually discuss it. But it will not take effect this year either way. It will not change anything this year. It will not allow me or anybody else to work public employment. And I understand your feeling because you are a public employee. I was a public employer. And I said once before, you have been a great person and I don't take that back to have worked into, and far as being a city official. But like I say, it would not change, um, outcome right now. It wouldn't change your outcome in November, nor would it change my outcome. So I'm following the procedures. I'm following the step. I want to take it through the Legislative Committee once again. I want them to get an opportunity. I wanted to be able to discuss it on the floor, not on the floor, the floor of the legislature.
Somebody else's be, it doesn't matter to me.
Then after we discuss it there, I would like it.
My law directors.
No, I'm through with Jones.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Anything else, Ms. Jones? Okay, thank you. Jason?
Mr. Chairman, Malachi Fruits.
Malachi Fruits, I don't see. Malachi, state your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Malachi Fruits, uh, one three six zero zero York Boulevard.
Okay, you, go ahead. Your floor is yours.
Thank you. Um, I want to start by saying, uh, my dad did not ask me to speak. This is me speaking as my adult self. Um, but I just, I just wanted to say as, as a citizen of Garfield Heights, I honestly feel disappointed and kind of embarrassed, um, by the, by some of the people who are leading the city. Um, I am not going to name names. I don't want to start any arguments. Um, but there, there, I do want to praise Mayor Burke for some professionalism he has shown. Especially when, um, talking about the concern of some emotions flying. Um, but there has still been several times during this meeting and several meetings I have attended before. Um, that just honestly make me upset. Um, there is little professionalism, um, by some of the council members. And as, as a nineteen-year-old pointing this out, I, I, I don't know what to say. It saddens me and I do feel like there, there does need to be change. And, uh, I agree with what a lot of people have said. Um, especially about some of the racist things that have been said. Um, and I also wanted to talk about the issue that, uh, Mr. Michael Peters brought up um, about the new legislation. Um, specifically about the wording of only bilinguals. Um, it, it, it is kind of disheartening, um, hearing the word only, only being used for something that is supposed to talk about diversity, equity and inclusion. Um, cause yes, well, I do agree with you, Mayor Burke, um, that bilinguals do have problems with diversity, equity and inclusion. I disagree that they are the only ones. Um, and I also agree with Mrs. Bolton on there, there has been language that's been used that does, um, include the all lives matter, but prolonged. And then something else I also noticed, um, was at the beginning of the meeting, there was the rule that, um, we needed to bring this up to a council person. And I apologize, I did not do that for this one. Um, I would like to state that I noticed that that was only enforced for Mrs. Bolton. Um, and that if, and I, um, I do thank you for letting Mrs. Bolton speak. But if there is going to be a time to enforce something, I do believe it needs to be enforced throughout everyone.
Oh, I should stop you from talking. Right?
Mr. Chairman?
I says, I should stop you from talking then because you said you didn't bring it up with anybody?
Well, I, I am done.
I gave you the floor. I gave you the floor.
You did. I appreciate that.
Yeah, and I gave Ms. Bolton the floor too.
And I did thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Blake.
First of all, I, I have to say, I am so, I'm, I'm, I'm very impressed with, with, uh, Mr. Malachi Fruits. He's very intelligent. And I, and I have to say, if that is a, a reflection of the, of the school system of Garfield Heights, I'm very proud. If it's a reflection of our youth, it's, I'm very proud of that. Uh, especially to have, to be able to, to say what you said and, and get it off your, your mind and, you know, and again, if I said that it's the only thing bilingual, maybe I misspoke there, but I will say one thing. When you grow up in a household where you do live with, with somebody who has to speak two different languages, it doesn't understand the English language like others do. It is very tough to, um, it's a tough experience, especially growing up as a kid. Because there were a lot of times that I have, would have to go to the grocery store with my own mother and have to explain to her some of the things that other people were trying to explain to her because she didn't understand. You know, the, the world today is a lot differently than it was when I grew up. And I know that, you know, a lot of us have to adapt to it and we do so. We try to, you know, and, um, so I just want to say that I think having that, the, the point of having a, a community relations committee is to get that work done about the, the diversity, about the equity of the inclusion. It's very important that that be addressed, you know, but having somebody at the helm of it that literally can understand what it's like to grow up and be in a bilingual household helps to make other people, um, understand what that's like, you know? And I really think that, uh, that's where I was getting at. That was the point I was trying to make. I, I wasn't trying to single anybody out, but that was the point I was trying to make. And, um, you know, Mr. Malachi Fruits, I'm, I'm very proud of you. I, I really, uh, I'm, I'm very enlightened and I'm very, I'm very, you, you made my night. You've made my night by the way that you speak. And, um, thank you for that. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Blake, anybody else?
One second. I do not see any more hands.
Okay, um, what I was supposed to do at the beginning of this meeting is say that after a couple hours, if the meeting does run that long, some of us, uh, need to take a small break, but seeing as I was at the end of the meeting, I'm going to ask you all just bear with us. Next, next meeting, we will call a break at one point in the evening and, uh, allow people to use the facilities. Um, so what we'll do is we'll go into miscellaneous business by council and, um, I will start off this week with, uh, as always, say the, put the best one first. Mr. Dudley, it's you. Unmute, Michael. Michael, unmute.
Uh, I said, I thought the best was gonna be last, the time said he's gonna be the best this week. He wanted to go last. All right, chairman. Hey, first, uh, like I say, um, I want to thank Pastor McCambray and Tamika, first lady. They done a great job and getting these shots out to everybody and the shots are definitely important, you know? And don't be scared off because one out of twenty-eight people, twenty-eight thousand people is having a reaction to that, you know? You can have a reaction just with getting, you know, your, your normal regular shots that you get as a kid. Technic, technic, what they call technical shot. People have. But definitely we need it. Like they say, it's not going to stop the virus. But if you do get sick, like they say, your survival chances are much greater and it won't be as bad, you know? And trust me, I, I, I've been through COVID and I wouldn't wish it on my worst enemy. But I thank them for the effort that they put out there and making sure that it happens and everything. So we appreciate that. Um, also, I wanted to thank my sons and grandsons. They got out this weekend. They picked up garbage up on MLK. They actually picked up eleven bags of garbage just on MLK between Thornhurst and the Cleveland line. And they does, and it's a great thing when they do because this week we had other individuals say they want to start helping out. They went down to a hundred and thirty-first and they did a hundred and thirty-first and a Forestdale Playground. And we picked up some other people who want to join them as well. But like I say, you know, they, it was not something I make them do. When I say, hey, do y'all want to go out? They volunteer. Say, hey dad, we go get, hey grandpa, we go get it and stuff. We have fun when we do. And they just about work with, we laugh, we joke, we make a good time out of it. But it's about, it's all about community. And if you teach them younger, it works out better as they grow old. They have a better sense of responsibility, but I, I thank the young men for helping out and for what they do. Uh, second, I wanted to let you all know that I had received a message from, um, Mr. Stanley Miller. And I want to pull this up. And as we know that Mr. Stanley Miller now is actually the community and local government, uh, relations person for Metro Hospital. So what he sent over there today and I had a conversation is, he has some, uh, Pfizer shots that they would like to give out. And he want Garfield Heights to have an opportunity because I think last time we might have ran short. But they're going to be giving out, actually, in, um, Maple Heights, it's going to be on Northfield. And what we need to do, and it's not a thing that I want to do, like I told my colleagues, I want them definitely to get a hold of some people because they're going to be issued that particular code number just for them. And they'll be able to go over there and take their first, uh, Pfizer shot or whether the first or second Pfizer shot, they will be eligible to do. So it's going to happen this coming Friday and this coming Saturday. So I'm going to provide the information with your council people. And so everybody trying to call me, get in touch with your council person so they can get your name and your number and stuff. I'm going to get it back to them and you will be issued your own particular code for you and nobody else. And that's going to allow you to go over there and take your shot on Friday and also on Saturday. So after this meeting, no longer, after the meeting, but no later than tomorrow morning, your council members will have this information for you. And the only thing they do is end up giving the names or whatever that mounted account they need. And I will give it this, uh, Mr. Miller and he will send the codes back to us. But definitely get out there and take them shots. As for the testing, we were doing up at, uh, Holy Spirit, they actually, I went back temporarily California. They had to calibrate some machines that I believe when include the new mutated virus, the way it's mutated, that they could test for that as well and still do the antibodies. But they are back now and they're going to be rescheduling testing as before. But due to the, uh, holiday that we had during Easter and that religious week that goes prior to that, there was no time to be tested because Holy Spirit is a busy church and, uh, we didn't have a room to fit us up in there. So definitely that is going to be rescheduled, time to be determined and you will be notified of it. And, um, that's basically that I got. I'm going to make it short. So do reach out to your members of council tomorrow. Get that information, get up there and get your shots. Uh, I know pastor, um, I've ministered, I'm calling on pastor, you're speaking, it's going to happen. So I'm going to say Pastor McHenry is going to definitely be putting the shots out again. Get there, get your shots. Like they said, they lowered the age group. And for the overflow of you, so you don't have to go a long distance, the information will be there. Go up on Northfield, it's been given by Metro Hospital, don't cost you nothing and get them shots in. So they're going to be looking for as well. And I really think Metro Hospital, well as Mr. Stanley Miller, and some of y'all may remember him as the end of AC director in the local Cleveland chapter. He's a great guy and he's been around for ages. So we appreciate him then. And also I ask you all to keep my family in prayer. We lost one of our newest, uh, family members today, this morning. And the reason why I'm here, I'm just going to get myself, keep myself busy. But I do keep her some prayer, you know? So we lost our newest family member, uh, who would have joined the family today. So, uh, definitely keep us that. I'm not going to touch on anything else to happen tonight because I know for one thing, I say Garfield is going to get better, people. It's going to get better. I had to raise nine kids in Garfield Heights. Everybody know my children. I've been a Garfield Heights president since twenty-six, twenty-seven years now. And I lived all over the world. And at the end of the day, I came, ended my time, I came right back to Greater Cleveland and I came over to Garfield. Every city has this problem. Every city has an issue. We can nitpick all day, we can nitpick each other all day. But I tell you, you spend half the time, this applies to everyone, working on a positive as we do the negative, it'll be a much better city than it already is. So just get out some thought and like I say, that. So just get out some thought. And like I say, done to keep my family in prayer, keep all the families in prayer. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Mr. Donahue, the floor is yours, sir. Unmute, Chuck. There you go, buddy.
All right, just uh, last time I talked, I uh the council meeting, I kinda got ridiculed like I said I would. So I'm only gonna say three things. One, yes, I'm the one that brought it up, the fact that you should talk to your councilman, council member or public official, public servant before you talk. Sorry, didn't mean to hurt anybody's feelings. Two, uh, I also said something about the ci- uh, about the civic center. Well, that got the council people kicked out of civic center, so I won't go any further on that. Mr. Fruits, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to yell at you. I'm a very protective father. My daughter is seventeen years old. I say things. I say things sometimes I shouldn't. But is that it is as a father. Would I hurt anybody because they did it? No. I'd have probably dragged, just dragged them to the police station or called a cop and had them come take them. Because as you know, I can't get in any more trouble. You brought it up and you know why. So I, I apologize, Mr. Fruits. And with that, I'm done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. Next, we'll move on to Mr. Blake.
Uh, first of all, I'd like to just extend my sympathies to Councilman Dudley's family. Secondly, I would like to congratulate the members of the Community Relations Committee, Pastor Ian Cox, Pastor Faulkner, Sarah Lyons, Vanessa O'Malley, Bob Stemrock, and Minister Kevin McHenry. I look forward to the things that you're going to do with that committee and uh I'm glad it is moving forward. Then finally, I would like to uh thank Recreation Director Burke and his staff for the uh ice show that they put on. And I'd like to thank the uh participants as well. They did a great job. And with that, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Mr. Taglerini, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to uh send my condolences out to Councilman Dudley's family. I'm so sorry to hear that. If anything that me and ours knew, let us know. But I also like to thank Mr. Burke for putting on that ice show. I had a wonderful time. I was amazed and really, really enjoyed it. I, I got such a kick out of them little ones. It was so, and then, and really welged job on that. Also like to thank Pastor McHenry for putting together the program with this COVID uh vaccine shots. Uh, I know he helped me and my wife. We were having a very hard time getting in anywhere. They made it so nice and convenient. Thank you very much. For the, the new members of the community awareness, uh, I would love to help any way I can. If there's anything I could do to assist you, just don't hesitate. With that, you have my report and I thank you as all.
Mr. Nanavich? Yes. Um, I just wanted to say, I seen a, a, a chat, a text come by. I believe Marina Bach is on the call tonight, so she's asking if she can introduce herself. And I don't want to jump in front of Councilman Vaughn or be disrespectful, but I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Okay, I'll tell you what. We'll let Councilman Vaughn speak and then I'll let her jump in front of me.
Mike, let her speak. Go ahead, let her speak, Mike.
Okay, Marina, you have the floor. Name and address, unmute, please.
Will do. Thank you, Councilman Mike. I appreciate your time and I appreciate you just opening the floor to me for a moment.
All we need is your name and address.
Mal- uh Marina Palomino Bach, address five zero three two East one seventeen, over here near the Parkway. I'm very excited for this new endeavor. I'm a Garfield Heights mom, a former teacher, fully dedicated to issues of race and diversity, equity, and inclusion. Um, and I'm just excited to get involved more in our community. Uh, like I said in a few different of the Facebook groups as well, I've tried for a bit and haven't had much transparency um with like the dates and the times and the ones and the wheres. So I'm just really excited to get to learn from and with all of you. And then bring some of my experiences as well as an educator, as a mother, um, as an agent of change to our community so that we can get to learn from another, one another more. Thank you. That's all I have.
Welcome aboard. Thank you very much. We look forward to you. Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to welcome the me- new members of the Community Relations Committee. I wish you a lot of luck. I think people are expecting great things from you and I know you will deliver great things. I'm asking the residents to be patient. Let these people gather together and let them forge forward so that we can move things along. I'd also like to invite everybody to a day of prayer, May sixth, at Saint Therese Church on a hundred and fifth and Granger. If there's ever a time in our city's history, we need prayer. We need it now. So let's all join together. I'll have more details on this at our next meeting. But again, that is going to be May the sixth at Saint Therese Church at a hundred and fifth and Granger. Some good news. The Block Watch is coming back on Tuesday, April the twenty-seventh at seven P M in the pavilion and on the campus of Saint Monica Parish. Please come join us. Mayor Burke is going to be there. We're gonna try to get caught up on all the changes and some things that have gone on in the past year. It's also about fellowship. It's getting to know your neighbors. You don't have to live in Ward Seven to attend. Other members are more than invited to attend. Please join us. We normally have a cookout in June. We're going to move that this year to August because we're hoping every, the majority of people will have their shots by then and feel more comfortable in that, in an environment like that. So look forward to August, our annual cookout. Hey, the ice show was fantastic. It was great. You guys did a great job. And most of all, I really enjoyed the tribute you all gave to Mr. Dobie's. He would have been very proud and touched. And it was very nice of the Dobie's family to be there and to present the first Robert Dobie's Award. You know, ours, as um Mike Nanavich and a few other people mentioned tonight, our city got hit with that terrible windstorm and of course it was garbage day in Ward Seven. The city, Court Community Service, and residents themselves did a great job going out, picking up the garbage and trying to make the neighborhood look clean. And I appreciate that. Mike Dudley, my sympathy to you and your family on your loss. If there's anything Barb and I can do, please reach out to us. Mr. Malachi Fruits, thank you for your words you shared with us tonight. It was very professionally, very well done. And you are a great product of this, this city. And with that, that's all I have for tonight, folks.
And thank you, Tom. Okay, I'll keep it very brief. First of all, again, I'd like to express my condolences to my friend Mike Dudley. He's been going through a lot with me and my family and I, I know what he's gonna be going through now. Mike, I appreciate what you've done for me with prayer and everything and your support and anything we can do in our family to help you. You know, you just gotta ask. I missed the ice show for the first time in twelve years. I had a few problems going on here. Most of my council members know what it is. Uh, I won't go into detail, but I know they always put on a good show. I really feel sad that I missed the uh tribute to Mr. Bob Dobie's, a very good friend of mine. I miss him a lot. I really do. Uh, his family was struck with a lot of tragedies in the past couple of years and I know how it feels. Bob, Tom mentioned about the trash pickup in the city. The people were doing a good job. I still wish that the people on garbage day, uh, our service department is getting after this right, quite rapidly. But when the truck dumps a lot of stuff on the street, they try to pick it up. But before the truck gets there, a lot of stuff on the windy days and we have been nailed by wind. It blows out the cans because we overfill them and we have to. Because we have a lot of trash to put in them. But you know, when the trash is picked up and you're taking your can in the backyard, pick up maybe one or two things in the street. Saves that sweet sweeper, street sweeper, a little bit of a more, more work where it doesn't come down the street and get kicked in the lawn or kicked back in the street. I want to caution everybody that, well, not caution, make aware, better word. When you're cutting the grass, please don't blow it in the street. It's, it, it makes a mess in our sores. Uh, it blows in other neighbors' yards. If you blow it from your street across the street, now the neighbor has the problem. If you had any weeds, they've got that problem. So I mean, clean up after yourself. Pick it up. If you have to cut the first one by the street, cut it where the lawnmower is blowing it back on your property. If you don't use a bag to pick it up. When you're done, sweep up, rake the yard, do whatever you have to do. But don't blow the grass in the street. The same thing we ask you with the snow, not to do anything. And uh, last but not least, excuse me again, the committee that Matt Burke worked so diligently to put together. Matt, I think it was a lot of work, a lot of things going on. The people, again, I asked that you support the committee, give them the ideas, sit in on the meetings. I'm looking at some new community leaders, probably. Give them a hand, give them ideas. Let's talk with them because yelling gets you nowhere. Even though it got a little heated tonight, I think everybody was, was quite well, well, um well in consideration of the other person. And uh, I think that we're gonna do good with this committee meeting. I think it's got some good direction. And I think, I think they have some, no, I believe they have some very good ideas in store for us. I don't know what they are, but help them out, give them all the help we can get. And um, again, um, my, my condolences. And if there's nothing else, uh
Councilman Nanavich? Yes. Can you please remind everyone the date of the meeting that is being moved from tomorrow?
Yes, um, the next meeting will be April twenty-second at six thirty. It'll be a Zoom meeting. And that's the special meeting that was held, supposed to be held tomorrow night due to the a request of Miss uh Councilwoman Davis. She's a little bit under the weather. Um, she can't make it. And I really believe she has to be there. So uh uh, again, the meeting is postponed from tomorrow night to April twenty-second. So that's a two, a Thursday. And it'll be at six thirty on Zoom. And thank you very much, Mr. Blake, for bringing that up. Other than that, none of my council representatives have anything and the mayor has nothing. Uh, Tom?
Can I make a motion to adjourn, please?
I second that. Chuck Donahue seconds it. Uh, on the motion to adjourn, starting with Mr. Vaughn.
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donna who?
Yes.
Nanavich?
Nanavich votes yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
The records show that at nine twenty-three P M on four twelve